Good evening, welcome to the thirteenth meeting of the year. Today is September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Melissa, can you please read the publication?
In compliance with chapter two thirty-one of public law nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to be held at the criminal justice building sixty-one Main Street, South River, has been published in the home news Tribune on January fifth, twenty twenty-five, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the borough website and the front door of the criminal justice building at sixty-one Main Street, South River.
Roll call.
Mayor Dingding.
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Here.
Councilman DeSantis.
Here.
Councilman DeZemian.
Here.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Here.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Here.
Council President Siula.
Here.
Please stand first.
All the reasons put in line of the United States of America and the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please state standing for a moment's silence. It may be seated. Alright, welcome to the council meeting. For our first presentation, there was a president that did more than she could have met, well, more than we could all imagine. She landscaped the peninsula that sits on the corner of Park Avenue and West George Street, which if you haven't been out there, you should go out there and take a look at what she did. I do have a couple pictures of it, from flowers to rocks to mulch to everything you could possibly imagine. She did this all on her own. So, the council likes to give her a certificate of appreciation. Triesta, are you here?
On behalf of myself, Council President Tony Siula, Councilwoman Donna Ballas, Councilman Matthew DeSantis, Hank DeZemian, Nick Giannakopoulos and Jane Kretchinsky, presented to Triesta Holmes for taking the incentive to beautify the public area of South River. We greatly appreciate it, and so does the residents of South River. Thank you.
Just have a few little things.
Be.
No, it's okay. Some highlights. Yes, I am that lady who speaks, touches and encourages her plants, bushes and trees to thrive. I have lived in South River since October nineteen eighty-two and drove past this much neglected plot of land, like we already said, Park Avenue and West Whitehall from the Little House. Which I now refer to as the South River Little Garden. You got the little house and now the little garden. And I am going to put a plaque, I have a piece of, that's my son's plan. I have a piece of slings, so I'm going to be painting that, so people won't know. On June twenty twenty-four, after my landscapers completed spring cleanup, mulching, et cetera, I looked around my yard and said, now what? I'm done. There's nothing else, there's not like, you know, two feet of land that I could put perennials or annuals or anything. Towards the end of twenty twenty-four, Nick Giannakopoulos and his charming wife stopped by our house and he talked about wanting for council member. Of course, after we talked, I gave him a tour of my yard. And in March of twenty twenty-five, Nick came to the house and he said, you got the green light from the mayor. And I'm looking at him, I totally had forgotten about when we had met the year before. And I said, really? What did I get the green light for? And he spoke to the mayor about my vision to beautify the little garden. And that May of this year, I took my shovel and was barely able to go through the compacted soil. Oh my God, what did I sign up for? July twenty-five came around, I finally completed the bulk of work, the task that I had set out to do. We all know that gardening is year-round, and I hope that I can continue for as long as I can. I could not have completed this project without the support, help and encouragement of family, friends, neighbors and professionals. I would like to thank the following folks. Nick, full of support he has given me. My husband, John, and my son, Adam. Cindy Wilk, my friend, and she also provided me with my first shrub, which is a pink hydrangea. Dorian Kerber, who provided a lot of the beautiful annuals that you see on that picture. Tim Graham, who was a neighbor, and also he helped spread out all of the soil that Adrianosaurus and his wonderful team provided. Emily Grasso, environmental commission team. Shari White, environmental commission team as well. She's not here. Denise Batista, friend and provided me with vital contact names. DPW, Adrianosaurus and his fantastic team, like I had mentioned. Linda Zadlock, who is a neighbor and provided the beautiful cannibalsies, which now I have shared with their bulbs and I'm sharing throughout the neighborhood. And of course GS Lawn Services and Landscaping. Thank you very much.
No, pleasure.
Thank you.
We are going to go into agenda sessions. There are six first readings. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, we have twenty twenty-five twenty-three, that's just to remove a handicap spot. Twenty twenty-five twenty-four, that's an increase in parking fees for your commercial AT-River trucks. We have twenty twenty-five twenty-five, that sets a renewal term for erectile licenses. Twenty twenty-five twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five twenty-six, that sets the fee for the renewal. Twenty twenty-five twenty-seven, that is a no parking on Blue Acres property, is to allow a code enforcement officer to enforce that also. And twenty twenty-five twenty-eight, that is just adding a secretary to the redevelopment committee. A non-voting secretary.
Okay. Melissa, can you please start off twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three for the first reading?
Orders twenty twenty-five twenty-three, and orders of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter one ninety-three entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three on its first reading by title only. The clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M. on October the twentieth, twenty twenty-five by video conference via Zoom during the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second. Motion by Council President Siula, second by Councilman Kretchinsky.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Council President Siula.
Yes.
Melissa, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four.
Orders twenty twenty-five twenty-four, and orders of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter one ninety-three entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M. on October the twentieth, twenty twenty-five by video conference via Zoom during the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second. Motion by Council President Siula, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Council President Siula.
Yes.
Melissa, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five.
Orders twenty-five, twenty twenty-five twenty-five, and orders of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter two oh nine entitled License Trades and Occupations.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five on its first reading by title only. Clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a public hearing and second reading to be held at seven P M. on October the twentieth, twenty twenty-five by video conference via Zoom during the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second. Motion by Council President Siula, second by Councilman Kretchinsky.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Council President Siula.
Yes.
Melissa, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six.
Orders twenty twenty-five twenty-six, and orders of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter one fifty-five of the Borough Code entitled Fees.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six on its first reading by title only, the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M. on October the twentieth, twenty twenty-five by video conference via Zoom during the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second. Motion by Council President Siula, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Council President Siula.
Yes.
Melissa, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven.
Orders twenty twenty-five twenty-seven, and orders of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter two fifty-eight entitled Property Maintenance.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven on its first reading by title only, clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M. on October the twentieth, twenty twenty-five by video conference via Zoom during the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second. Motion by Council President Siula, second by Councilman DeZemian.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Council President Siula.
Yes.
Melissa, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
Orders twenty twenty-five twenty-eight, and orders of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter twenty-two entitled Boards, Commissions and Authorities.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M. on October the twentieth, twenty twenty-five by video conference via Zoom during the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second. Motion by Council President Siula, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Council President Siula.
Yes.
We are going to go into reports, starting off with Coral and Mayor Justin. Standing.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief update on all the capital projects in town. For the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four local aid programs, which include improvements to Lenny Avenue from Old Bridge Turnpike to Grant Avenue, Brown Street from Cleveland Avenue to Will Cox Avenue, Dara Street from Virginia Street to Bray Street, Daly Street from Ferris Street to John Street, and John Street from Colfax Street to George Street. The contractor has completed milling and paving. All signed stripes have been installed and our office has issued a punch list for them to complete.
Right.
For the twenty twenty-three local transportation projects grant, which include improvements to Almiron Street from Ferris Street to Sepia Avenue, Franklin Street from Wilson Avenue to Pulaski Avenue, and Tulsheski Avenue from Cam Avenue to Prentice Avenue. Office completed design and it's been submitted to the DOT for their comment. We're still waiting on word back from them. The twenty twenty-five local aid program, our received grant, for improvements to Prentice Avenue from Willett Avenue to Sheldon Avenue, Tice Avenue from Old Bridge Turnpike to David Street, and Cleveland Avenue from Virginia Street to Terminus. Our office began working on the design. The twenty twenty-five electrical substation maintenance, we are preparing a bid document, which should be ready within, I'd say, by the end of the month. The NJDEP Stormwater Assistance Grant Application, our survey department is working on this year's portion of the project. And for the twenty twenty-six local aid program, our office submitted a grant for Mercer Street, Lion Street and Mitchell Avenue. That's all I have.
Anything for the mayor?
Motion.
Anything else, Joe?
Two items. First one is, you have a resolution to extend your contract with the building company through twelve thirty-one and twenty-five. This will give the new company time to get everything messed together. Very difficult trying to hold prior information of the new company. And the other resolution is to authorize the purchase of police vehicles under state contracts.
Anything for Joe?
DPW, Paige. Alright. October sixth, we start giving out the leaf bags, so you can pick them up at the DPW office from eight to twelve. Monday to Friday, and then after a couple weeks, we'll start giving them out on Saturdays at the recycling center. Monday, the thirteenth, will be closed for Columbus Day, no yardlings. Then on October fourteenth, curbside leaf pickup begins on the south side of town. And then also, the hydro, fall hydroflection starts on the fourteenth and runs all the way to the thirtieth. And we'll be putting it in Nixal, it'll be on the website. And Facebook also, our Facebook page. That's all I have.
Anything for Paige, council? Fire chief, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, all units are in service. We started our testing programs already, so we're working on having our pumps, ladders and posts tested. We did have a large amount of fail already, but once we complete everything on October seventh, I'll be able to pull my suit and carry it back on Saturday.
Thank you. Anything for the fire chief? Melissa?
Just that the last day to register to vote for the general election is October fourteenth.
Andrew?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right.
Just a couple things to remind the public to, if you're a landlord, to get the paint tested in your apartments, either set up the appointment, it has to be done by the end of the year. We also have sent out notices for everyone to try to identify their service lines through water main project coming into their building. And the last thing I have is, in the next couple of weeks, there'll be a firm notice. The county will be starting ripping up Main Street from Hillside to Ferry Street to take out the existing trolley tracks. It's a fifty-week minimum project. There'll be traffic changes, there will be a lot of issues. It'll be posted on Nixal on the website. And if you got any problems, call the county.
There's a lot more on the county. Anything for Art? No. Let's start with Councilman Kretchinsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Pretty much, the office on aging, we're pretty much through the month in everything. But you can still call because they're offering high dose flu for seniors. And it's by appointment only, but you can give them a call if they have any more available spots. Also, there's an FBI notice too. There's a lot of retirement scams going on. They're using AI. Do not respond to anyone unless you know them personally. But that, that's all I really have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ballas.
Okay, South River Day will be happening on October eleventh. If any vendors, community groups have not yet gotten in touch with the cultural arts, they can do so at culturalarts@southriverandgate.org. So, we're looking forward to doing that. The Board of Health will be sponsoring again a paint party at the REAMR on October twenty-eighth between six thirty and eight thirty. That's to benefit the TMR project for the trapnutter release. Tickets will be thirty dollars, and if you have any questions, they're going to be, the public will be notified probably within the week. And that will be through the shell at forty-eight Washington Street. And lastly, this is my feel-good story of the day, actually the month. The Food Bank would like to give a special shout-out to the following kids for their lemonade stand on Cam Avenue. Leah, Ryan, Ellie, Aiden, Avery, Luke and Nick. And thanks to their mom, Annabelle, and her sisters for helping them make this happen. This year, the kids raised four hundred and fifty dollars, which will help provide food at the South of Food Bank for those in this community who need a little extra help closing the gap in their food budget. So, good job, kids. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been meeting with TB thirty-five, our department, OEM, and with some of the other departments soon to get what they need in terms of supplies, equipment for next year's budget, so we can sort it out and see the best we can do to get them what they need. And that's all we have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman DeSantis.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Education update. The homecoming parade was this past Saturday. I marched with the Puff Warner Football and Cheer Group. We had a beautiful day and it was great to see everyone come out. One of our town's longstanding traditions. They also asked me to let you know that the new annex for the preschool will be open as of October first. They also asked us to notify the Borough. There have been a lot of issues with children misusing the new turf field. They asked that parents instruct their children to stay off the field with bikes and scooters. It's going to ruin the turf and it'll make it unplayable for its intended use, which is soccer, baseball and softball school teams. Their next public meeting is this Thursday, September twenty-fifth at seven P M. high school auditorium. From the Recreation Advisory Board, they'll be hosting their annual trunk or treat on Saturday, October eighteenth. Please note the new location, it will be at Grokowski Park, which is at three seventy-five Wayhead Avenue. The event will be from four thirty to six P M., followed by a movie in the park night. The movie should start around six fifteen, and they will be showing Ghostbusters: Afterlife. You do not have to register to attend the trunk or treat or the movie, but if you want to bring your vehicle, decorated or undecorated, to give out candy, you must register on the website. The entire event is free of charge for both residents and non-residents. Registration will also be opened up soon for wrestling, basketball and adult zumba. Wrestling is for boys and girls ages four up to sixth grade, and the season will start in late November. Basketball is also for boys and girls in grades kindergarten through eighth grade. And they're going to try to have a girls-only division this year, depending on registration and sign-ups. So, please sign up early. That season will start in January after Christmas. And the adult zumba will start in October, you can register for that starting this week. You can visit the Borough website for more details to register, www.southriverNJ.org. Click Departments, then Parks and Recreation, and you'll see a link to enroll. And if there are any issues online, you can call the office at seven three two two five four 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 one two. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Yes, Mayor. The Environmental Commission got together a free cycling program in our borough. There's a flyer on our township website for that. That's going to be October fourth and fifth, and you can register to be on a list of homes that people can come and get free cycling. That registration deadline is by six P M. September twenty-ninth. And our next Environmental Commission and Shade Tree meeting is October sixteenth at the Borough Hall on our township hall over there. And if you want to sign up to be a part of that committee, they're always looking for new members. Thank you, that's all I have, Mayor.
I'll hold my comments. I'd like to open this to the public. Five minutes, please state your name and your address.
I'm Emily Brasser, thirteen Darrow Street. Is it okay if I explain a little more there besides recycling?
Yes, okay.
Go ahead. For a resident to know what recycling is, it's sort of like a garage sale, but in front of your house, but people can come and take things for nothing. And it's for personal use only. People can take things for their personal use, it's not for people that takes up and then resell it on eBay. So, what it does is it keeps usable items out of reef, out of landfills. And, you know, you may have some things around your house that like, aren't really worth anything, but you think somebody can use. So, that's what free cycling is about. So, if you go on the Borough website, there's a link that will take you to a flyer. Click the link and it'll have a survey come up. And you answer the questions, what your address is, what things you have for sale, what days you can participate, what time you can participate. So, a couple days before the free cycling, which is the fourth and fifth, there will be a list of addresses published, not with the name on it, where people can go and get things for free. And also, there'll be a map available, and those will be on the Facebook page and Borough website. So, that's what it's about. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. If a resident signs up to be a part of this list, they don't have to be home and present at the time, they can just put everything out and just kind of leave it?
No, I hope people, if you put this up out and it's not there when you come back, that's kind of the goal.
I just wanted to make sure that you don't have to be present to like interact. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Sherri Erickson, one five three Cam Avenue. I'm also, I'm the environmental position. I just wanted to add that I did go on the Borough website today, now maybe it's just me, I didn't see a link to click. So, you can also, if you don't find that link, click recycling, just search recycling, and it'll bring up what you need. And something, too, you don't have to do both Saturday and Sunday. You can do one or the other, if you don't want to do both, so.
I appreciate it. Anyone else in the public?
Teresa Hutchinson, thirty-eight Virginia Street. I'm here to remind everybody as Councilwoman Ballas in about South River Day, Saturday, October eleventh. This day honors South River and all of our residents in South River. A lot of work goes into it, the Borough, the Chief Police, the DPW, the councilman, the mayor. Everyone is hands-on, helping us to put this day out, South River Day. We spent some money on that. We don't ask for anything, except that the town come out and enjoy South River Day. We'll have a lot of activities, we'll have food vendors, we'll have informational tables. We'll have a fun house with inflatables that the kids could jump up and down in and have a lot of fun. We'll have a petting zoo. So, you just have to come out, because we're going to be there waiting for you. So, please, everyone come out to South River Day, Saturday, October eleven, twelve noon to five P M. Come and enjoy the day and bring, bring a big one.
Yeah, say where it is.
Montgomery.
Oh, no, 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 no. Now, that's asking too much, because I'm not telling you where it is. You don't want everybody to come. All right. All right, okay. South River Day is going to be by the school on Montgomery Street. So, come out. We have, we have a bunch of vendors now, I'm just going to tell you real quick. Well, we have Maggie's Lemons. Everyone loved her lemonade last time around, she does a great job. Come on out. Although, I heard about some of the children with a lemonade stand, so I don't know how that works.
No, no, they're not going to be there. They just stand it on their.
Nope, nope, children of lemonade. But we'll have fun. Okay? So, we'll have Maggie's Lemons, we're going to have a couple of other food vendors. We're also asking for more food vendors to help us out. And come on down, because there will be people there looking to grab a little snack and this is a good way to share what you have with our town at reasonable prices. Alright, so everybody, please come on down, Saturday, October eleven, South River Day. This is for you, South River. Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Hi, I'm Asher Flucker, thirty-nine Claremont Avenue. I was, wanted to ask, I live by the school and I wanted to touch on the traffic and speeding to these little preschool kids. And I spoke to you about possibly a speed bump or a hump or whatever, because, I mean, some of these parents, they're walking with their little kids in the street, strollers, jaywalking, not noticing where they're supposed to. And, I mean, I live there and it's, I'm afraid somebody is going to get it by car. There was just an accident the other day, sideswiped the car, you know, that got it to a little tip. But, you know, it's chaotic over there, and I understand, it's only for half an hour. But the point with trying to get people to slow down is a concern. And what else? I noticed that there are some residents that have on their driveway curbs painted yellow, so people don't park that close, because my neighbor was locked in today. I've been locked in before. I back in my driveway because it's not good, I have to leave during that chaos. I can't back out my driveway. It's impossible.
You can have all the yellow orange you want.
Uh, yeah.
Because I actually had to call the police last week and I did a police report, because this woman actually came on my front porch. She gave me a hard time, yeah. So, I did a police report. Enough is enough.
Yeah.
Now, they shut the cones down by the school, so that automatically lets people think, oh, the yellow's good now. They don't get it.
Right.
I know where you live, you know where I live.
Right.
We got the same problem every time.
Which I don't understand, if they're stopping, if they're coming to a complete stop at David and Claremont, there's no way, they should be doing thirty-five by the time they zip around that bend and I'm right there. I even suggested, if you, if you did one of those digital signs that, you know, she tells you how fast you're going. Not to make anything of it, but maybe people don't, you know, they just want, you know, they just want appliances. Huh? A whole world either. I don't know. Parking my driveway and she. I don't know, parking my driveway and shoot radar.
Yeah, right. They're responsible for police departments, so they are going to be posted.
They've been controlling, you know, a lot more since, you know. And, um, yeah, I.
Let's put a yellow line, Sage, if you could just take a look at our house and see if it's doable, please. Anyone else with it yet?
Thirty-nine Claremont.
We'll do, we'll do it all street, sorry.
It's just.
Do the whole street.
Well, okay, good, all right. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Not yet.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman, it is Jason Albera, I'm at forty-six Mercer Street, South River, New Jersey. So tonight, I'm here to talk about Resolution two eighty-two, which is acknowledging the Friends of the South River Rec Department as a nonprofit organization. And today, I'm speaking on behalf of the organization. I've had the honor and privilege of sitting in the seats that you guys have been in. And since I've left, we've seen our tremendous, uh, our Recreation Department tremendously grow in terms of participation between cheerleading, wrestling, basketball, football. But unfortunately, one of the things that has also risen is the need for children to want to participate, but not necessarily have the funds to do so, or families are struggling. Um, I have asked many of you guys personally on this side, I don't want to mention names, you guys have contributed to the cost of helping children participate in different activities through the borough, uh, borough activities, and I want to thank you guys for your continued support. The Friends of the South River Recreation Department was created and is dedicated to supporting and enhancing recreational opportunities for our community. Our mission is to ensure that every child and family has access to programs, activities, and resources regardless of financial barriers. Through fundraising efforts and community partners, we provide assistance to help cover registration fees, equipment, supplies. We foster inclusion, participation, and the lifelong benefits of recreation. Our cheerleading program, right now, we have two different levels, we have a local and a competition, a local team and a travel team. The local team is five hundred dollars, the competition team is a thousand dollars. A lot of people may say, wow, that's a lot of money. We are actually by far the lowest in the state. When I tell people what we charge, they're like, how do you guys get that? The fees will allow, uh, by recognizing the organization, our goal is to get more people involved, and by being able to purchase equipment, by fundraising and doing that, I understand that, you know, we're limited in what we can do. But as a, as a borough-recognized organization, a bunch of parents and I got together, we formed this five oh one C three to help get back, so we'll be providing more information. If there's individuals that are struggling, they'll be able to apply to the board, and the organization will kind of check for that child's participation. So I just want to thank you guys for your consideration of this resolution. If you have any questions, I'm happy to help out.
Appreciate it, please.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Hi, Mayor Karen Small, I'm in East Miami, my mom from San Diego, Barbara Briggs, thirty-five Stevens Street. And I was kind of just wondering what you guys are going to start doing with that street? Because it's cement, and there's a lot more traffic going through it, and if you guys are making apartments up on that bank, then there's going to be a lot more traffic. There's a lot of, right, right there, yeah, and it's like, I've actually asked to, you know, cover all the, you know, little holes in front of my mom's house, they patched them, but it was like little patches. But my concern is that more traffic is going through, I don't even know if that's the only cement, um, road that there is according for the whole entire South River.
No, there's another.
There's another, I thought there was another. But I'm just saying that if there's more traffic going through, then at least and everything, with all the bumps, the cars and everything else, and the police department always goes through there too, because everybody tries to avoid, Dutch Street Unpromised, to avoid the light, because that's a one light. So it's like, I decided this time to speak up for my mom, you know? And I don't know if you guys are going to plan on making that a one light, because you know you have one light going one way, but if it goes out that way, it's terrifying for people coming out, there's so many accidents going, making a left or right, because now that's a county road. When I, my mom lived in everything, that wasn't a county road. And it's just getting more and more traffic, even building all these legal companies and everything, I get it, that is, I get it. Like, it's just, you know, I just wondered if you guys are going to target that or not.
All right, what I'm going to do is I'm going to speak to our engineer, if you could, uh, note that. And I'll reach out to the PD, uh, so let them know that the consideration of a one-way road. It's all about John doing their investigation and see how it works out.
I mean, if they make it one-way road, they're probably going to make it the same way that actually here in Stevens. But coming out when you get to read, it's dangerous.
Oh, I'm sure it is.
So it's like, I know how kind of he would want to make another one-way road that way. But it's like, and ever since all those houses been tearing down, you know, it's like everybody's basically parking, you just got to drive down Stevens Street, and it's ridiculous. And I get it, you know, she's trying to keep in her house, and I'm trying to maintain it for her. And I don't live there anymore, but I wanted to speak out for her.
No, I understand.
And other neighbors too, because they even said about that with the, and they said if anything, you want anybody to sign papers and everything to, to vote, they're actually saying that this is what should be done. It's been a long time for actually.
That works tomorrow, we go.
Yes.
I got you.
Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Very drunk, trying to bump this other way. You've talked many times, and you've given many excuses for the closure of Collins Drive. And none of them have any minor reason. You said the safety of the kids, on the sidewalk, and curbs on there. You said, uh, people go the wrong way on the one-way street. You said, there's no problem with the police, other place you inform that. And you also said that it was a, a service road. If you look up the service road, that fits the description of every street in this town. It's a service road for people driving through. So one question always, can you be very adamant about closeness? And I was looking in my notes and all this, and one of the questions that was not answered is, is it worth having that road closed for someone's death, for someone dying? Yes or no?
No, unfortunately, that road was never in the plans for to be opened. So I know we haven't had this discussion before, I'm looking forward to the next couple more meetings, that we're going to have the same exact discussion. And I would probably recommend you to invite Collins Drive, all the residents there, to tell you about the unsafe that they had to endure for a street that was not supposed to be open at all. But I understand where you're coming from. So I, I invite you to the next council meeting, October twentieth, please.
Sorry, is this scheduled?
I want you to come to the next council meeting, please. Let that road, that road will remain closed.
This day is not acceptable. You know, does that override, I mean, is safety more important? I mean, you talk the talk here, very highly about safety. That's what you're basically electing for, two basic things, safety and one of the other.
I would recommend, I would recommend you to come to my office, I'll show you all the videos that I've recorded. Two of them show two cars almost colliding, one car actually shows another person almost hitting a person.
Well, I'm.
So by all means, I'd like you to come to me.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Please.
You take a look at any street, if you, if you have strapped that, you might as well close that white guy, because you've got people scared. You've got, a boy got killed, what, two years ago, on there?
Several kids have gotten killed.
So, you know, I'm just looking at the whole thing.
All right.
But now, this is basically my, but it's still a public road.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, when you're saying concern with safety, you're saying on response time?
Yes.
I would defer to the fire guys here, would that road be crucial for response in that area? Or would it only be utilized in very small circumstances? Because you have, getting through that small tightness would slow you down so much, it seems like the other way in?
Their renovations were discussed at the last meeting, their last borough meeting, their renovations were discussed.
I think the defense was due.
I just wanted to defer to the, yeah, they've driven the trucks, so I'm deferring to their expertise, that's all I want to ask, thank you.
You know, July and Florida, we had a lot of heavy thunderstorms. South River got, uh, I don't say, didn't get missed totally, but we got three minor events compared to Manalatan, uh, Marlboro.
New Jersey Turnpike, the whole state I hit, so.
Yeah, hard. What happens if, you know, the main street is Blackfield Avenue? If you lose that street, you lose the east-west on the south side of the town. Therefore, a response time is even going to be longer, because it's not only just one way, and then by, one way, like two ways, it's not the one way, you won't get blocked, you know, your chances of getting blocked are a lot less.
Appreciate it, I'll see you October twentieth.
So when are you available?
You can call me tomorrow, I'll make it available for you, I'll show you all the videos. Seriously, call me.
Can I also, can I also say something to you? When, when we proposed to block that street, there was at least three families here that lived there that came to thank us because people go down that street the wrong way all the time. Now, you can't have a police posted, you could give out tickets, but you can't have a police officer posted twenty-four hours to stop people from going down the street the wrong way.
That's on them, so in other words, so what you're saying is you punish everybody else.
That is a safety risk.
You punish everybody else for that. I mean, if you use that same logic, you might as well close that white guy, people are screaming all the time.
Sorry, give me a call. Anyone else in the public?
Good evening, Joe Donato of the thirty Daley Street, South River. Um, I just want to make something perfectly clear to everybody is that the town, the mayor, the council members, the engineer, the, the part here, they all know about the work being done on Main Street. They've been involved in it at the very beginning, they've approved it, and they know what it entails. It's not going to be an easy thing, and it is going to be today's. But most of the answers, anybody's got complaints, the town should be able to handle. Don't come to the county for every little thing, the town has full knowledge of what's going on, and I think they'll be able to handle most of the questions. They'll probably come to me if they do go to the county, which doesn't mean you guys pull up and have them sent to me. But you guys can handle those questions. I don't like, I live here in South River, I got put up with it. Unfortunately, I don't live on Main Street. But that's neither here nor there, it's my town, so I didn't pay up for the service. Second thing that I wanted to talk about is the water main replacement project. Where do we stand on that at this time? I know I had, there's a gentleman here a couple of meetings ago that briefly said what was going on, but I wasn't quite clear of what actually was happening.
I will look back to you on the status on where he's at with his plans.
Did we have, I know.
Mayor, I can answer that. The application, is that the I-bank for the money?
Okay, that's, that's, that's good. My concern is, uh, we spoke about many times about having a public meeting to invite the residents and with their problems, so we know where in town the worst problems are, so we can organize the replacement accordingly. Did that ever take place, or, because I know the, according to the website, we've got everything on the north side of, uh, north side of the, uh, railroad tracks and the south side. So I'm not sure how that was determined.
I can tell you this, when we are ready to do the water lines, which is going to happen hopefully sooner than later, we are going to have a town meeting letting everyone know how we're going to be replacing every mine in town that is going to be replaced in certain parts, and which ones are going to come first, second, and third. So yes, we are going to have that meeting hopefully sooner than later.
All right, but by that time, you're already going to know where you're going to go, what you're going to do.
Most likely, we'll have a direction, but we already know based on complaints, based on history, where we're going to probably start, based on how water lines are, based on what they're doing now as we speak. So we got a pretty good idea.
I remember, uh, Mayor, uh, who, he's a, they'll do the names tonight. Your predecessor, President, President, uh, we spoke, spoke about a council meeting, and he said the same thing, and I agreed with him, that people are putting a lot of complaints and pictures and everything else on Facebook and other platforms. They're not coming to the council meetings, we both agree that they should come to council meetings. So what I suggested is to invite them and get, get the, the truth, or the true scoop from them, and have them fill out forms, so on and so forth. And I was hoping, before you got into the design phase of it, and hired somebody, that that would have been done. For additional information, make sure when we start it, we'll know where we're going, and then you can still have a public meeting and explain what's going to be done and how it's going to be done. But that's going to happen after the fact.
We'll pretty much be getting the whole entire town done, regardless what circumstances are.
Oh, so you're going to, you're going to hit the town all at the.
Well, not at the same time, we're going to have phase one, phase two, and phase three.
Okay, okay, and do you have any idea how long those phases is going to take?
I have no idea.
You'll probably know by this.
Well, no, we'll have, just like how we didn't know what the trolley cars, now we know it's going to take three hundred days for us to tear up all of it. We didn't know that until last minute.
Mr. Mayor, to answer some of his questions, we log every complaint that comes in.
Okay.
Um, so we traditionally know where the complaints were, and where to focus on. Most of the complaints are in areas where the four-inch lines, which are way too small and way too corroded, that are now half-inch or one-inch lines. Uh, we also have had no complaints, basically, until today, where we had an unknown water main break that caused groundwater. We, it wasn't the job that we were doing, contractor was going to do a service line, he thought the service line had broken when he dug it up, the main had a crack in it, who knows how long that's been going, it didn't come up through the street. So you get mud into the line, you get discoloration, it should go away in a couple of days. But, but we, the first phase is going to be from the railroad tracks to the north end of the South River. That is the oldest section in town, and the sound, the town area that have the most four-inch lines. And that, you know, just increasing the lines from fourth to, four to eights, going to increase the flow, is going to give us new clean pipes. As soon as the I-bank gives us the okay, because they also have to approve the plans, then we can go out to bid. Once we go out to bid, after the bid is accepted, then we'll have a timeline that we can give to the public. I'm sure, we're hoping for early next year sometime.
Like I said, we're going to keep on top of this, you know, you know, the phone was I did when I said it.
This one, this one I campaigned on, and I'm going to get it done. So I appreciate it.
That's good. Uh, another thing that I would like to comment and commend the borough for, I noticed, and I don't know exactly why, we have some security cameras being installed on the municipal roads here and there, along with additional striping, parallel parking, striping that's being done. I assume it's the areas where we have the most problems, and I really, I really think that's a great idea. And I hope you continue it throughout the rest of the town. In particular, what I saw was, which was brought to my attention by a number of people, was George Street and that curve there, which is really dangerous. So, I think that's a good, good, good idea, and I hope to fulfill it, get through the whole town to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public? First call, second call.
Making motion, please.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilman Krshinsky.
Call in favor.
Aye.
We have two very old appointments for human relations, tomorrow Walker and June Cremlis, welcome aboard. Uh, Alyssa, we're going to consent resolutions, twenty twenty-five, two seventy-two to two eighty-three.
For our resolution, twenty twenty-five oh one authorizes the borough council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore, be it as here by our resolve, the below list of resolutions are hereby adopted by the borough council in whole as of the same or individually acted upon. Consent resolutions, twenty twenty-five, two seventy-two to twenty twenty-five, two eighty-three. Two seventy-two, approval of a special events permit to the Portuguese Club for an event that was held on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Two seventy-three, approval of a special events permit to the Portuguese Club for an event that was held on September seventh, twenty twenty-five. Two seventy-four, permit a voluntary canning fundraiser to support the project graduation class of twenty twenty-six. Two seventy-five, promotion of Kenneth Nell to position of sergeant. Two seventy-six, various tax overpayments. Two seventy-seven, property tax refund. Two seventy-eight, authorizing contract renewal with Absol LLC. Two seventy-nine, authorizing the purchase of police vehicles. Two eighty-two, authorizing a contract with SL Environmental Law Group. Two eighty-one, authorized the bills and claims list. Two eighty-two, acknowledge Friends of the South River Recreation Department as a nonprofit organization. Two eighty-three, authorizing a shared service agreement with East Frontier.
What is your motion? Motion by Council, Councilwoman Ballas.
Aye.
Second by Councilman Krshinsky.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yeah.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Ozemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janopopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Grchensky?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes, with the exception of two eighty-one, twenty-five dash zero one five four three, zero two one five nine, and zero two four zero four.
Can I open up to council comments, starting with Councilman Gina Kavlos?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
I have nothing to add here.
Councilman DeSantis?
Nothing to add here.
Councilman DeZenian?
Uh, Imperial Music Center, next concert is on Sunday, October 5th, at 2 o'clock. There's no charge. The concerts are always a lot of fun to attend. Um, St. Pierre and Paul Church, we'll be having a fall festival on Saturday, October 25th, raffles, food, um, either eat there or to go. And that's all we have there.
Thank you, Councilwoman Valas.
Okay, I'm looking at the canning for the project graduation. They're gonna be doing it on October 11th from 10 to 2. What's Theresa? Would it be a bad idea to reach out to them to see if they wanna set something up at South River Day, maybe they can make some more money?
That would be a very good idea.
So give a call to the high school and see if they're interested? If they're gonna do that from 10 to 2, maybe they come to us from 2 to 5.
Absolutely, great idea.
All right. Um, other than that, to those who celebrate, have a safe Rosh Hashanah. A happy Yom Kippur, happy fall, and be careful, those kids out there, because they're all, all over, and please, just obey your traffic laws. I, I, I don't know what else to say anymore. I'm just saying, truly, I don't, I don't get it.
And that's all I have.
Councilman Kraschinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm probably gonna preach the same thing too. The, uh, light is dwindling, the kids are out there, while the weather is still good. Um, we have holidays coming up, where kids are gonna be banging on your door looking for candy. And I'd also, yeah. And I'd also like to thank all of the participants that came for our self, well, not celebration, for our dedication to, for the 9/11 memorial. With that, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Council President Seola?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, EDC, um, they did a walk around Main Street and announced some flyers for South River Day, and speaking to some of the businesses. Um, there's grants out there, there's low-interest loans out there for small businesses. Uh, I don't know why the businesses aren't trying to get any of this, but it's, it's very good that people who have gotten it already were very, very happy about the grants. So it's for all, it's for all businesses, so anybody that's out there, the EDC has the information, uh, with the state, and go from there. And again, like everybody else said too, the kids are out and about. They're on these scooters, they're on these electric bikes, and they're flying down the streets. Uh, the other morning, I was leaving early, and there was a kid on a scooter going up Johnson Place that passed the car going up Johnson Place. So please, be very careful of them, because they do not obey any of the traffic laws. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, I got quite a few things. Uh, let's talk about groundwater. Do not hide behind your social media and tell me you have groundwater. Call me. Reach out to the town. Email us, that's what we're here for. The reason I'm saying that is so we can explain to you why you have the groundwater, so everyone has a pretty good idea of the direction this town is going to. On Friday, we had our water main service done, where it interrupted most of Ober's Turnpike. Four fire hydrants were turned on at pretty much high pressure, and everybody that got affected, got affected. Today, we had a water main break at Arrow Court, and once again, affected quite a few people. And yes, the groundwater is still there. They fixed the problem, the water will go, uh, sorry, the water, the color will go away. Just turn on cold water, go to the highest point of your house and turn it on. And trust me when I tell you, I had my number one complaint sitting on my house, my wife. We have brown wood. She was yelling at me, why aren't you doing this? And I'm like, I am doing everything possible to get this water line project underway with this town. Now, I promised you I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it. Earlier this year, we, we received a million-dollar grant from the county, and this is just the beginning of the amount of money that we're gonna hopefully receive. The other thing, we received a letter in the mail, a picture. I know you can't zoom in this sound. Looks almost like this, it shows you four different types of pipes, where you're supposed to take a picture. You're supposed to take a picture of that pipe and send it to the town to let us know whether you have lead or copper, or whatever may be that you have coming into your house. The problem with this picture, copper and plastic is self-explanatory. The galvanized and lead, the picture is actually switched. So make sure you're not thinking that the lead looks like that.
I just didn't like, I guess.
The picture is mistaken.
It's very simple.
So take a picture of it, send it in. If you're not sure, we'll let you know. Ninety percent of our town has copper lines, but we wanna be on the safe side. This is something that's being issued by the whole entire state. So this is something that is for your, more of your health than anything else. Projects that are underway, as you see, Laugh and Chevrolet has started doing their pilings in the ground. You guys see a lot more activity as, uh, it gets into the, uh, winter. Um, please, drive safely around them, construction is gonna be booming. Uh, PNC, I know the end of this year, they're gonna be, uh, end of this year, sorry, end of October sometime, they're gonna be taking down the building. I know parts of Steven Street will be closed temporarily while the trucks are there, so just so you're aware. Uh, I am going to chase the other part of York Street, hopefully with CME, what we could find out, what we could do. Um, this is something that's gonna come to you as, uh, well, South River. Uh, Laugh and Chevrolet, the Seattle branch with the 17 units, won a New Jersey Planning Board, a planning officials award ceremony, which is gonna be held September 26th. So congratulations to the, uh, project and the staff that, uh, put this together. And this is right here in your own town. Speedhums. I completely agree with you that we need them in so many parts of this town. We are working on it as we speak. I am looking for quotes. It's a process, and we're looking for how it's gonna affect certain streets. Cam Avenue, Ladin. Uh, inner streets are going into the school, for example. So we are working on that as we speak. Um, one of the other biggest projects, which you heard earlier today, was the trolley cars, trolley tracks being removed on Main Street. Please, take alternate route. It's gonna be a tedious job, it's gonna be a long job. It's gonna start at the top of, uh, Main Street, all the way down to Ferry Street. This is a long-awaited project. The purpose of this project, as you know, if you're driving down, or, or, down or up Main Street, you'll see that it bumps a lot, well, that's because the trolley tracks are settling. It's finally given, so they need to take it out. You're gonna have a whole new paved, uh, road, and then, this whole entire project. So please be patient with this. E-scooters, bikes, it's a huge issue in this town. You have scooters and bikes that are going almost 35 miles per hour. Believe me when I tell you, we had a meeting with the New Jersey Board of Mayors, which I belong to, and one of the biggest bills that we're working on now as we speak is something that we could do with putting helmets, permits, certain age restrictions, where do they ride, how do they ride? This is something that we'll work on, it's gonna take some time, but this is a statewide issue. Fire Department. As you all know, last year, there was a house explosion that happened on Continental Court. This year, on September 11th, 2025, the South River Fire Department, along with Chief, uh, Bill Smith, second assistant, Steve Drugos, third assistant, I'm sorry, and ex-chiefs Jerry, Jerry Murphy, Eric Garner, and Paul Migget, and ex-chief, uh, Scott Anderson from East Brunswick, were awarded a unit citation form of New Jersey State Fire Chiefs Association. What this certificate or this award says was, recognition of performing outstanding operation at a, at a confirmed house explosion with multiple entrapment, active gas leaks, and structure fire. Alarm number 133, at Continental Court, South River, New Jersey. These are what you call volunteer firefighters that risk their lives every single day to do just that. Two entrapments were inside this house, and they did not care about what was in their way, but to get those people out. So two of those firefighters, Bill Smith, Steve Drugos, Jeremy Murphy, Eric Garner, Paul Migget, Scott Anderson from East Brunswick, Leek, and, I'm gonna see Scotty. Oh, yeah. Train was, and Scott, oh, I'm sorry. We thank you, we congratulate you, uh, on behalf of myself and the council. Thank you for your volunteering. That goes to the rest of the Fire Department in South River. Thank you. Now, legal parking. School is back in session. My dad lives on Johnson Place in Willow that. People park in his driveway, and they think it's okay. He's 92 years old, and believe me when I tell you, it aggravates me, but my mother calls me for it. Call the cops. Do not think twice about it, this is their job. Call them. They may be overwhelmed in the morning, because there's four schools going, but they will come to that scene. Please, and if the person continues to do it, take a picture of the license plate, especially if it's the same person over and over again. The police will come. South River Police Department. As you all know, if you have Instagram or social media, just so you're aware, we did a little bit of a clip. I'll explain what this is for. This is completely 100% free. All-American Ford decided to make a Ford Bronco that is police-equipped with every possible bells and whistles. Since I am close with, uh, Ford, uh, All-American Ford, they pushed me to try to get South River to do a little commercial skit. So I teamed up with the Film Commissioner of the State of New Jersey, since he did American Horror Stories, and I said, you owe us a favor. So this was all free of charge. They decided to put a skit together and get three of our police officers, Sergeant Paul Menzinski, Patrolman, uh, Daniel Stone, and Detective, uh, Decocota, to do this skit. It came out remarkably now, the way it works. You have to like it on Instagram, and the more likes they get, they can win one of 20 police departments in the state of New Jersey to go and actually pull this key. So if they win, you get a free truck out of it. It's all for free. Us, and, you know, beautifying, or not just like beautifying, making, making South River Police Department even better than before. I also want to congratulate Kenneth Nail for becoming a sergeant. And last, school is in session, like I said. Please be aware of these kids, they are running in and out of these, uh, cars while they're coming home from school. Please drive slowly. Be aware of your surroundings, especially right around school time. I appreciate it, thank you. We are gonna go into closed session. We are not going to act on anything. You're more than welcome to leave if you like. Uh, Alyssa, can you please read, uh, read consent resolution to make forth?
Resolution 2025-284, whereas, section 8 of chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, permits the exclusion of the general public from the meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances. And whereas the mayor and council of the borough of South River are of the opinions of circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it as hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of South River and the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, for the public be excluded upon the here and after specific subject matter, and that such subject matter to be so discussed is as follows. Litigation, be it further resolved at such record of the above discussion made public, when confidentiality is no longer required, the Borough Council of the borough of South River may or may not take formal action at the conclusion of the executive session.
Motion. I want you to go to closed. Motion by Council President, uh, Councilman Kraschinsky, second by Councilwoman Valas.
Councilwoman Valas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZenian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Kraschinsky?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.